We'll call this work session Monday, April 19th to order. Amendment given by Mr. Stewart and the pledge of allegiance on this matter.
Another spray. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for every blessing you have given us. We ask that you watch over these proceedings and we'll be pleading your side. Please watch over the employees and citizens discussed for the glory of their daily life. Watch over our military, bring the home safety to their families. Lord God, who directs us from the end, we may all come to thee. In Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one on the agenda, discuss ordinance 619, amend the first Monday ordinance. Mr. Kimber, could you go over that for us, please?
Some time ago, the council asked for an amendment amending the current first Monday ordinance. Basically what this does, it turns the event waiver to the Main Street Corporation. It is, gives them basically agency rights at the turn of time. For that purpose, this would continue until the council gave six months notice or Main Street Boulder gave six months notice that one of the arrangements ends.
Anyone have any questions on this ordinance? Here and we'll move back to next week's meeting. Number two, discuss electrical disconnect at the solid waste recycling center. Mr. Loeb?
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. This that you've got in front of you is to provide 480 out, three things disconnect to the sorting table that the recycling grant has provided us. They came out, did the measurements, fixed and put the system in. We have to carry a disconnect about 25 feet down and set it for them. They'll connect, but it's got to be there before, you know, they can get this up and running. That addition is coming off our existing system, but we don't have that over there now as long as we're able to do it.
So this is the table, this is the system that you ordered or is this something right there where the?
It's right there for railing on the top part that actually shoots the products into those bins down there.
Well, this come out of the loan, I mean the grant money? Or is something that will have to come out separate?
That's something we'll have to do separately. The grant money's already been, funding's already been done, they've already sent it in and they've already paid us. Done good.
Anyone else have any question? No, we'll move it to next week's meeting. Number three, discuss the truck, animal control. I'm gonna call him Mr. Congo first. I know I'll ask him some questions about this truck and then if he talks wrong about that. We've got your packet, kind of tells you a little bit about the truck we own now. Can you kind of go over that truck with us?
Yeah, we purchased the truck, which it was a used truck that we purchased. Since then, we have had our commission bid work and started looking into it. We ended up removing the dash from it. Inside we found gravel, mud, glass, just all kinds of stuff inside of it. Appears it's a condition merge. We haven't replaced the flooring, any batch panels, it just mowed, moved, done the floor coverings. We've had electrical module problems with corroded connectors, which all are condition merged. So I expect this to be an ongoing electrical problem with this truck and we don't know what else.
I can see here, this truck was purchased in 2019 and we spent $14,000 on this truck. And as of today, we've spent almost $6,000 fixing things on it, so. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Congo, on the truck?
What model is this truck?
Oh, it's a 114. Yeah, I'd say 15 would be that.
So we're basically going from street department over to animal control?
Now, this is, this is actually, Ron, you want to come forward? This is actually the police department's truck, the animal control truck. And.
Yeah, it's an animal control truck and it was purchased, it was an old United memory of old United.
Dash part of the truck, because I would hear.
It's an old fleet truck, yeah. And it's been a nightmare. I think it's been out of commission about four months. We've had it a year and four or five months and it's been out of commission about four months. And then, just for, for your information, I pulled the latest state bids. Ford F-150, brand new, quick cab, half ton, two-wheel drive. I circled that price on there and you sheet in the packet, that 25841, that's the brand new Ford. So we're almost close to that, getting this vehicle already.
Any questions? We'll move it to next week's meeting, I'll see. Number four, discuss tourism grant application from Scottsboro Jackson family rescue squad. Mr. Shook, you want to talk about that?
Thank you for having us. Also, we applaud for the tourism grant again this year. This is the support of our best firm that we'll have in May, May 15. Previous spend all has been in March every year, but last year we got postponed, we were coding like everything else in town. So we made it this year to March, I mean, excuse me, to May, May 15. And it's just had to support our work. So that's important, advertising thing to do for a long time.
How many years this term has been going on? How many years has this term been going on?
This is our 10th year.
10th year.
Yes. Yeah, we didn't run it for 21 or 22 years and that kind of fell away and we moved in this last time. It works pretty good for us, we enjoyed doing it, pretty good fun.
Anyone have any questions on the term?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like this, this is put on next week and probably these folks. They perform a service to all of us and I know first hand, wanting to get it and they do it on free. And they've done outstanding jobs, so I appreciate y'all and I'd like to see it on next week.
Anyone else? Thank you. We'll move it to next week's meeting. Number five, discuss request for additional audit. Ms. Oliver?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Nita Oliver, does everybody know that? I had asked back then, requested for an audit back in November of 2020. And in February of 2021, I again requested that the audit process move forward. I'm asking, I was asked to come up with a specific area that where we would want the audit. And today I'm coming back to the board and asking, I'm requesting that a second party accountant examine the internal controls of a city accounting function specializing, associate with receiving and recording revenue and authorizing disbursements to pay expenses. Internal controls are the checks and balances within the accounting function that prevents the misinterpretation of assets. Our citizens, citizens asked me to do this when I was elected. And I tend to keep my promise to make sure that this goes before this board. So I go back to 2020 of November, when I asked the board, what was the reason not to go forward with this? And again, I'm saying it again today, today is April the, sorry, 19th, I'm sorry. I'm asking, why do you not want this second audit? That's for anybody. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll make some part of that. I would say after both of those meetings, both times you were willing to wait, right?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make that clear. Next, I would ask, have you spoken with the mayor about setting up one of these audits and what it would cost?
I think that we all have tried to, y'all came up with.
Now, this is the first time I've heard about de-top audit, you know? We've had this conversation a few times, but you never actually said what kind of audit?
Well, that, the thing was, President, that you had requested, well, Mike had requested to table it and asked for a specific area.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm coming back with a specific area.
Okay, and I think we're all glad to hear what it is finally.
Okay.
And, but then the next step would be getting with who would be doing it. You said you wanted a second party.
Yes.
And so that lets me know audit that we're having now is not going to be what you want.
I just feel like a second eye would not hurt our city.
Okay.
And I feel like that, as the citizens have asked of this and requested of this, I feel like we should go forward with this and move forward with this. And I think that we owe them that. I understand that this is taxpayers' money that we will be spending for this. But at the end of the day, the taxpayers are asking for this. And I'll be glad to talk to the mayor too.
Well, I think that would be either the mayor or the financial director. I think both of those would be. I don't know what firm you want to use or what it's going to cost, but of course, before we can vote on it, we'll need a firm and a price.
But remember, the firm was, they asked them to talk to a firm out of Birmingham? Everybody remember that on the board?
I do.
Okay.
But has that been done? What firm do you have in mind?
What firm do I have in mind? I have, it's a firm in Appleville that I would like for us to look at too. And like I said, I'll be glad to look at any other firms. But I do feel like the citizens of Scottsboro deserve this.
Mr. Kimber, with the price of one of these audits, is this something we have to pack up? If we just use anybody or can we, is this something maybe to put out for bid or?
Audit thing is professional services, so it's bid law, it's not a plot. Under the law, the mayor has the right to appoint the official auditor of the city. Council, if they wish, can have an additional audit. It's just a matter of where you come up with money.
All right, so to move forward.
And I'll be honest with you, I would be willing to give up my income every month for this. And I'm standing in front of the House City of Scottsboro.
And I don't doubt that one bit. And so, all I would say is we have to have a price and.
Because if you do a specific area, President, it's not so much in depth.
Yeah.
So it's not as expensive.
Yes.
I just want y'all to know that. Thank you.
So to move forward with this, I really can't put it for a vote this week without having been able to discuss the price.
You would need to know the price and the firm, which can be.
So if I move this to the next work session and give you time to get that, then we can move forward from there.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
And I would, I would be willing to have someone else on this board to look for a firm too. I'll be willing to do that if y'all would want to go with me with that. How about?
So, so by next work session, if anybody else has a firm or a price you want to come up with too, you can bring that to the next work session. Sorry? All right, we'll move that to the next work session.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Number six, discuss request for rezoning property. Mr. Cooper?
Pretty much what we're trying to do is get some affordable housing in Scottsboro. Looking for something around in our square feet. It's not available in Scottsboro at the moment. We're asking from the zone right now, is that AR? We like to have a R2 zone on this property. There has been an issue about the concerns about the curb on this property. And what, what law people's not realizing is, is once we clear this property off, it's going to get more visibility in that curb where you're going to be able to see a whole lot better than what it is now. And I think the city has already spent a lot of money on this road to try to make the cycle of what it is now. Another concern was flood zone. Some of this property is in flood zone. We have no intentions of building in flood zone. And if we do, we'll get with FEMA and pull it out of, pull it out of flood zone. There's already water, water and gas there. We talked with water center and gas about bringing sewer in, they give us a couple of options. We've got all that worked out. Any questions?
What part of the property is in the?
It's on the back path of the property. If you'll turn over to about the third or fourth page, I've got a map on there. And you can see where the creek is running.
Yeah.
About where it starts is, is where the creek starts on the property, that's where the flood zone starts. It pretty well goes straight across through there.
So you're going from where the creek is, over more toward the Woods Cove, is where you're going?
That's correct, yes. Mainly the road frontage is what we're, is what we're going at.
Mainly the what?
Road frontage.
So, Mr. Cooper, so road frontage meaning that there be residents along Woods Cove Road with driveways up to?
That's correct.
Do you have any kind of design for the subdivision right now?
None at the moment, because we haven't cleared the property off. There's some low spots in the property, we don't know if we can build there yet. There's, there's still a few little issues we're working out, but we do not have a design yet.
So all you're coming to the council for tonight is to look to get your rezoning?
That's correct.
Right now it's on AR, back of the residential, and you're looking at the R2?
Yes.
Anyone have any questions?
So on the, Ms. Parker, so you would be cutting any streets? Just building along with the highway?
That's correct, yes.
So no additional street transfers to take?
No.
And I know you're working with the builders and can you explain how shortage, or one of y'all explain how short we are on that subject?
What, right now, from zero to one million, there are actually 19 houses in the city of Scottsboro. But that also includes the, like in Scottsboro post office, they.
Can you name the Scottsboro?
Yeah, Scottsboro, yeah.
So that could be Scotland.
And swearing joke. So that includes everything. So the median price range from 100,000 even 200,000, we're looking at two or three houses right now. We're selling them as soon as we can put them on the market. And, you know, Scottsboro with the income levels that we have now, this type of housing is what we need. We just sold one that was on the market a couple of days over on Kyle Street. And it was 1,600 square feet and we sold it for 239,000.
Not bad, right? Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Cooper? Mr. Cooper, how many units are you expecting to?
It's, it's really hard to say right now. You know, we're, we're hoping for at least 12, you know, maybe, maybe more than that. Lack of support, it all depends on when we get in there, start clearing everything out, how part of that property is. What part of us is fine, but there are, there are some low spots over there and we'll have to figure out what we have to do.
And the size of the lots for those units?
We're hoping for 100 by 150.
The R2 requirements?
Yeah, R2 is a little less than that.
It's actually 70?
Right.
Any more questions?
Move the property, it's not going to be a bill what you planned for it. You all clear the whole thing or just?
No, we won't, we won't clear the whole thing off. There on the backside where flood zone is, we're kind of unsure with some of that yet.
Yeah.
We're not going to be building houses like that, that's for sure.
Anyone else? Mr. Kimber, for us to move forward, now this would have to be, temporary, we'd have to do as far as a public hearing?
There'll be a public hearing, advertisement. Email a couple, three weeks ago for the process. It'll take.
But the council would have to approve this first to go forward, right?
Yes, that has to, to vote to go forward with the next step and then have to go to rezoning.
So we can put this on next week's agenda to vote to move forward?
Yes. That does not grant the application, it just starts the official process.
Thank you. We'll put that on next week's agenda. All right, number seven, discuss the asylum class of BS nation high school fishing tournament contract.
So this contract, which we also have, is for February 19th, 2022. This is the same tournament that was here two weeks, two weekends ago. I've already spoken to the hotels about it. They really like this tournament because it brings a lot of families, so it's a high school tournament. And they're from all over the state of Alabama. They're asking for $4,500 and also six special rooms for one night, which is the same thing they've asked for for the past two years. Any questions?
Any questions on this? And of course, anytime you bring the high school, you bring the whole family since it was a lot of big ones down to the night. No questions, we'll move down to next week's agenda. Number eight, discuss the part-time clerical position at city hall. I'm not giving an hour on that, but. So if, if no one out there knows, everyone up here does. Ms. Phillips, we have a.
Stays around my son?
Her third son. And so she's going to be missing some time at work. And so we're going to have to be looking at having a little help for while she's out of work. And so I think Mr. Kimber, rest assured, is going to take minutes. So we'll have the meeting covered, but we'll need people, someone to know. Get these lovely packets ready for us each week and others, other things throughout the week that has to be done. So to move forward, I guess, we'll have to look at how many hours a week, what we're going to pay them and different things like that. But this is the first discussion on it and just want to make sure everybody's aware of it. And this is a spray, I guess. And we have Ms. Phillips kind of, I don't know, she's 15, 16, she knows. Been working with her already on that. So, Mayor, I was, I'm going to check in with you though, as far as clerical duties for the week. I don't know what all of you also will need with Ms. Phillips being gone, so. There's several things that we've already discussed it. And so if you two could kind of work this week and give us an amount of, I guess, hours or amount of dollar figure and we could put that on next week's meeting as far as what to, how much to approve for the time being. And of course, depending on how long Ms. Phillips is out, we may have to look at that again. But of course, we need to start somewhere. We're looking to get somebody in there and get them trained before she's out, so.
Mr. President, are we looking to hire somebody on a part-time basis or on, or on a contract?
Well, this will be, I don't know if, it's just temporary, so I'm not, I don't know if you draw the contract. It's not a part-time job that stays.
Mr. Cleveland, how do you do with your, your temporary seasonal worker? You just, you consider part-time?
We do almost part-time. Must be less than $28.
Okay. Didn't want to call him seasonal worker, kind of sounded funny for this situation, but. Yes, so part-time worker. So we'll move that to next week's agenda. All right, number nine, discuss the part-time seasonal worker at solid waste department. Mr. Loeb?
This position I hear goes back to the first thing we discussed. Sorting table, the sorting system comes in. We have an opportunity, a retiree from the city is willing to do it two or three days a week, actually run this system. I thought we'd try it as a part-time seasonal to see how everything works and then we can relook at it. Patrick, it's, we sold some products about two weeks ago, some of the plastics that we actually separated without the system. The system gets here, it's going to separate all of it. But the revenue that it'll bring in is quite more than just doing, you know, mixed, that's the revenue. So I think it's going to be well worth it. And him willing to do it, if you so choose to go that way. We're going to have to have somebody run that system. They're going to put it in the bottom line. Thank you, sir, it's going to take two weeks and it's.
I know we've all discussed this and knew that this day was coming and we started recycling back. And so this is the first step right now, we've talked about. We may not need more than one employee out there, recycling keeps picking up. But for now, we're looking at just hiring a part-time seasonal worker to cover the, cover this. So anyone has any questions, Mr. President? And now, I'll, I'll do that one though. And so you said part-time is usually up to 28. You said three days a week, so are you talking eight hours a day?
Eight hours a day, that's five hours a day, eight hours a day, three days.
So 24 hours a week.
Twenty-four.
Okay. One for 24 hours a week. All right, we'll put that on next week's meeting. Number 10, discuss the resolution surplus three department property. Mr. Loeb?
Yes, sir, I've got three items that we'd like to surplus. Two of our mosquito machines that we spray during summer with. These two are four years old, but we've had a lot of problems out of them and we get real poor service from the company we bought from. We're hoping to get enough out of these two to buy another good machine like we bought last year. They run quieter and we have less problems. And then on this bush hog, y'all bought us two for this budget year and we won't sell this one here, we don't need it anymore. It's 15 foot and that one is a bush hog.
So you're looking at surplus in these three items and using the money to purchase another?
Yes, sir.
Fox?
Fox.
Anyone have any questions on this? If not, we'll move that to next week's meeting.
Thank you.
Number eleven, discuss additional funds for the storm shelter.
Josh, okay. As you know, we've got two new storm shelters, one at Hollis Memorial Chapel and one at Greg's Baptist Church. And we need a little bit more money, approximately thirty-one hundred dollars to wire the generators up. Water, sewer, and gas is donated generators, and we need twelve hundred a piece to wire the generators up. And then we need another seven hundred to get the sidewalk to step forward down at Greg's Baptist. I think that's about, if I match, about thirty-one hundred dollars? Twelve hundred on wire and seven hundred on concrete, twelve hundred a piece.
So additional thirty-one hundred dollars to finish up those storm shelters.
Right.
That'll finish the storm shelter?
Yes, sir, should finish. That should be it.
And that'll be four full operational storm shelters in the city of Scottsboro. Any questions on that? We'll move that next week's meeting. Number twelve, discuss reimbursement for the Jacks County Historical Association of Site Clean-up on North Houston Street. Mayor?
Yeah, I don't know whether anybody's been through or not to see where the old last gen was, but it looks a lot better. It really looks good over there. We partnered with the Historical Association, who's working with Baptist Church and the whole process. And we split the cost with them to finish the site out, and our part was sixteen hundred eighty-five dollars.
Dr. Spears is not here. Something will be. Any questions on this cleanup, the cost of it? This is, I know it's been a hassle for a while, but it's a long process, but it looks like it's coming in again finally.
And we are continuing to work with the old Scottsboro wholesale building. We've got a potential use for that slab that we'll be working with them on in the next year.
Careful, Kimber, all right. No other questions on that, we'll move that to next week's meeting also. Number three, discuss the resolution regarding the small wireless facilities. Mr. Kimber?
It has been said, no person or entity's life, liberty, or property is safe whenever the Alabama legislature is in session. The legislature, a few weeks ago, passed Act Number Twenty Twenty-One Five, which has to do with the attachment of small wireless facilities on poles and structures in right-of-way. Well, you ask, why is that important for the city attorney to bring you a resolution? Well, the wording got changed three or four times and the end result sort of gobsmacked everybody who was in municipal law. There's provision in there which basically gives the small wireless facility operators the right to use city right-of-way for any purpose they see fit unless the city has in place a plan ninety days, at least ninety days before the effective date of the act. So there are cities around the state running around trying to come up with plans. County commissions are doing the same thing. The co-op and the electric power board are passing resolutions too. And it's, I think, an unintended consequence that some things have just inadvertently got put into a bill and let go. But needless to say, we can't let a situation arise where the city does not have ultimate control over its property. So what this resolution does, it resolves that our plan, that's going to be more than ninety days before the effective date, is that the city of Scottsboro's use of right-of-way shall be governed by the existing rules, regulations, and policies of the city. And will remain that unless and until there is a final non-appiable federal order, rule, or regulation by the appropriate entity of Washington.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Kimber on this? Careful none, you'll know exactly why we're moving that to next week's meeting. That concludes this work session. We move the delegations, since we have none tonight. So reports, Mayor?
Okay, a couple things first. This past weekend was the cast and catching pass tournament. I was taller, was there. I was there. This is a fishing tournament that benefits the UAB Pediatric congenital Children's Heart Center. Mr. Robbie Covin-Haver at Captain D's is the title sponsor, and Marvin Automotive is the presenting sponsor. Drew McNutt is the tournament director. This was the largest cast and catching they've had. They had some two hundred fifteen votes, with all of the donations going to UAB Heart Center, Children's Heart Center. So I just want to give it a lot of credit for what they are doing, what they're sponsoring, and how successful it is. It was really a successful tournament. The other is to give a street update. We had a pre-construction meeting last Friday with the contractor and water, sewer, and gas and us. Went well. We got, I think, everything lined up. To that point, and Mr. Green, if I can add a lie here, let me know. Water, sewer, and gas board is going to be closing Garland Ferry Road next Monday to start their repairs. We're going to try to get notifications out to everybody that needs them to make sure they're aware. I'll be close for a week, approximately a week. The first street to be paved is King Street. I know everybody will be happy to see that, but that should be started in the next two or three weeks. And then they'll move to the package that start with College, Kyle, and then Garland Ferry will probably be the last in this first package. So we're getting there.
Yeah, thank you. Before I move on to the council, Mr. Auburn?
Yes, sir.
I assumed it's who you were. I took too many.
Yes, sir.
We didn't have a chance to meet beforehand.
Auburn is going to stand in the back of the room.
That's what I mean.
Yes, sir.
I knew that you wanted to speak and I didn't ever see you beforehand, so.
That's okay, and I was late and I apologize for that. Good afternoon. My name is Tom Auburn, and I'm the director of the State Ethics Commission. I am only here as a social visit. I'm coming just to say hi. I happened to be in Huntsville for some stuff today, and then I was down in Gunner's School, so I figured I would come up and figure. I know that I've spoken at a number of conferences where y'all may have heard me speak before, but I wanted to meet you again on your home turf and remind you that we're there to help you. If y'all have questions about whether there's certain actions that you can take, I would first recommend you speak with your city attorney. Hearing you talk about all of that brought back a lot of great memories. I represented a number of municipalities in my private practice before I came with this job, and franchises drove me nuts. Only, the only thing that drove me more nuts was dealing with the railroad, which of course I know you've dealt with too. But anyway, if you've got questions, direct them to your city attorney. We really enjoy working with city attorneys, also with the league too. Just remember that the key provisions of our act is that you can't use your position in a way that would benefit yourself, your family, or any business you're associated with. That could come up in votes that you take as as members of the councils. And also, you can't accept or solicit anything to corrupt or influence your official action. You remember those two points and nothing else, then you will be fine, I promise you. But so I know you've got a busy agenda, but since I'm here, does anybody have any questions you'd like to ask me before I leave? I'm pretty captive and I've got, you've got witnesses, so.
Yeah, maybe my fault, and I'll tell these guys you're coming.
That's okay. As you might expect, catch people off guard when I walk in and say, hey, I'm from the Ethics Commission, stop by. But part of that is that I really want you to realize that we are a resource for you. We would much rather you stay out of trouble than get in trouble. So there's a method for handling that. You just have to ask us and we'll answer the questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
There are numerous city employees as well as the elected voters that have to file ethics forms due to the end of this month.
Yeah, I've gotten a lot of questions about it.
Can the commission come up with one that if you're exactly the same as you were the last year, you just mark that thing instead of having to go through that whole page thing?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Let me tell you a little bit of history and I won't be too long-winded. I've been at this job six years. I'm working on the seventh year. And every single year, the legislature says they're going to change the statement of economic intersection of code. In order to do what you want, what you just suggested, which is a great idea, it would require the expenditure of way more money than you could possibly imagine it would take to do just that one very small thing. So every year, we've been waiting for the legislature to change it, which of course they haven't done. This year, what we have done is re completely redone the online filing form. And we will be beta testing that three days this month. It will be fully operational next year. It will be much easier to fill out because you're not going to have to actually manually fill out. You'll go through a series of dropdowns that will populate certain portions of the of the form. I think that if we get to a point where we're clear the legislature isn't going to mess with it, then it would be easier for us to invest the money into adding on to what we've just spent this year working on to do exactly what you suggested, which has been something I've wanted to do for about six years. It's a little bit more complicated than you might expect it would. And there are an awful lot of people who file these forms, and so it could present some unintended consequences if we were to do that. But certainly, certain portions of the form could populate your name, your address, who your employer is, who your dependent children are. The information that I would not want to populate would be all of the financial information that you have to report, simply because I think it's important for people to go through and and think about that again before they answer. And I think there are too many public officials or employees who might simply hit, there are no changes, without really reading it again. But there are significant portions of the form that I think could be automated like that, and I'd like to do it. So it's not falling on deaf ears. It is falling on the slip-based government. And then a lot of things that that have to be taken into account. But I feel you're paying in a year and I got to fill out the things. Do I haven't filled it out yet? You don't have to fill it out.
Yes, I did.
Do you? Are you an employee?
Yes.
Okay, you're not a contracted attorney? I'm sorry. So yeah, you got to come out. It's due at the thirtieth.
And they really expected you to fill this thing out too. When I was with the county commission, I forgot when you're. And it didn't take but a few weeks till I got a threatening letter and I filled that thing out that day.
But not that threatening is a bit, a bit strong. But certainly wasn't the intent, but you're right. I mean, the code requires us to get a notice before we can take any action. If you don't file it, then we can find you. But we've got, we've got about three letters we send out that remind, first of all, you know, for the county, the county administrator, for the city, the city clerk, of who hasn't filed with the city. And then after that, we send you a letter, and then if you still don't file, we send you another one and tell you that we're going to start finding you a day, about two weeks out.
That's one I've got.
That's the third one. Just, you brought it up. It's the third one again. But we don't want to find you. I mean, we just want you to comply. But because we send out those letters, our compliance rate is over ninety-nine percent, about ninety-nine percent right now.
Since I've been over here, actually, the curve is good to remind us.
Well, look, for a number of years, the commission was not very active about reminding people they had to file. And that's, and when I got here, we started sending those letters, and so that's my fault. But our compliance rate went up, and also our communication with the city's improved, which I'm very proud of. And there are a number of people who were filing and you didn't have to file, and they got taken off the list. So the other thing that I'll say is that if there are employees who don't think they should file, ask us because there are a number of employees we've removed from the list because once we look at how much they make and what their job duties are, they just don't fall within the criteria to file. So seriously dialogue with us about that because we have about fifty-five thousand of those that are filed. About eighty-five percent plus are filed electronically, which is great. But fifteen percent of fifty-five thousand is still on an awful lot of paper, and if we can cut that down some, we're more than happy to really get paid by the power, for sure. So this time of year, we do get a lot of questions about that. If questions do come up, just know that we're there to answer those questions too. Any other questions before I leave and let y'all do important stuff? Okay, we wish y'all lose it for not value, but it's, not everybody will have the courage to stand up and leave a city in this tough work. And so if we can make it easier for you, that's what we'd like to do. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll be nice.
Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Stewart? Really don't have anything to say, but we appreciate everybody coming tonight. Mr. Ashen?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Dahl?
Yeah, I wanted to bring to the council's attention that the catfish festival is coming up, and they intend to create an application for the tourism grant for y'all to consider. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Dahl?
I don't have anything tonight. I'm just glad to be here.
All right, so that concludes this meeting. I'll have you guys remember that we'll be making next Monday night at five o'clock. For adjourned?